It would be a town hall debate between Donald Trump and Joe Biden. But after the president contracted COVID, the Debate Commission announced it would have to be a virtual debate because of health concerns. The president then said he would not participate in a virtual debate. At that point, Joe Biden scheduled a town hall tonight in Pennsylvania on another network, and now the president is doing the same, his own town hall with the same venue format and time as NBC's town hall with Joe Biden last week. So the two candidates go head to head tonight, though not face to face, each in a key battleground state. And tonight, the president will be taking questions from voters here in Miami. We should mention our socially distanced, and they're wearing masks. And I should say, this audience looks a bit like America. It's divided. Some here voted for the president in 2016 and plan to again. Some support Joe Biden, and some say they are truly undecided. We're going to get a mix of questions on a range of topics, and we're going to get to those questions in a moment. But first, with all that ado, welcome, Mr. President, and thank you for being here.
That was very well stated, I have to say. Good job.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. We're glad you're well. We send our best to the First Lady and to Baron.
Thank you.
Do you have any remaining symptoms from COVID?
Nothing whatsoever. I'm great. I feel good. I was in North Carolina today and did a big rally with tremendous turnout, and I just feel really good. Florida, Pennsylvania, we're all over the place. It's been great.
You received some treatments that are generally reserved for those with the most severe form of the disease.
Yeah.
How severe were your symptoms? In particular, did you have pneumonia?
Well, I'll tell you what happened. I didn't feel good. I didn't feel strong. I had a little bit of a temperature. The doctors at the White House are fantastic, as you can imagine, and they really didn't want to take a chance. And they said, let's go to the hospital. I said, that's okay. I'm going to, you know, respond to what you say. And we went over to Walter Reed, where you have tremendous professionals. They gave me Regeneron and Remdesivir both. And I just, all I know is I felt good the following day. I felt really good.
Did the doctors ever tell you that they saw pneumonia on your lung scans?
No, but they said the lungs are, you know, a little bit different, a little bit perhaps infected, and, you know...
Infected with?
I don't know. I mean, I didn't do too much asking. I really felt good. I didn't have much of a problem with the lungs. I did have a little bit of a temperature. Obviously, I felt there was something missing. And then I tested, you know, I tested positive.
Well, let's talk about testing, because there's a little bit of, I guess, confusion about this, and I think we can clear it up.
Yeah, and there shouldn't.
Your first positive test was Thursday, October 1st, okay? When was your last negative test? When did you last remember having a negative test?
Well, I test quite a bit, and I can tell you that before the debate, which I thought it was a very good debate, and I felt fantastically. I was, I had no problem before.
Did you test the day of the debate?
I don't know. I don't even remember. I test all the time. But I can tell you this, after the debate, like, I guess, a day or so, I think it was Thursday evening, maybe even late Thursday evening, I tested positive. That's when I first found out about it.
Well, back to the debate, because the Debate Commission's rules, it was the honor system, be that you would come with a negative test. You say you don't know if you got a test on the day of the debate?
I had no problem. Again, the doctors do it. I don't ask them. I test all the time, and they...
Did you take a test, though, on the day of the debate?
You know, if you ask the doctor, they give you a perfect answer.
Yeah.
But they take a test, and I leave, and I go about my business.
So you, did you take a test on the day of the debate, I guess, is the bottom line?
I probably did, and I took a test the day before, and the day before, and I was always in great shape. And I was in great shape for the debate. And it was only after the debate, like, a period of time after the debate, that I said, that's interesting, and they took a test, and it tested positive.
So just to button it up, do you take a test every single day?
No, no, but I take a lot of tests.
Okay. And you don't know if you took a test the day of the debate?
Possibly I did, possibly I didn't. But, you know, the doctor has very accurate information, and it's not only that doctor, it's many doctors. The one thing, as you're, if you're president, you have a lot of doctors you're surrounded by. But I was in great shape for the debate, and sometime after the debate, I tested positive.
Let's talk about...
That's when they decided to let's go.
Okay, good. I hopefully provided some clarity for folks. Let's talk about the event that was held at the White House on the Saturday before you tested positive.
Yeah.
Subsequent to that, 13 people connected to that event tested positive. There was an outdoor reception. You've seen the pictures. There was an indoor reception. People were not wearing masks. My question to you is, at this point in the pandemic, knowing what we know, shouldn't you have known better? Shouldn't the White House know better than to hold an event like that?
Well, they do a lot of testing in the White House. They test everybody, including me, but they test everybody. And something happened, but as far as the mask is concerned, I'm good with masks. I'm okay with masks. I tell people where masks. But just the other day, they came out with a statement that 85% of the people that wear masks catch it. So, you know, this is a very tricky...
They didn't say that. I know that study.
Well, that's, that's what I heard, and that's what I saw. And regardless, but everybody's tested, and they're tested often. And I also knew that, hey, I'm president, I have to see people. I can't be in a basement. I can't be in a room. I can't be, I have to be out.
You can see people with a mask, though, right?
I can, but people with masks are catching it all the time. I mean, if you look at the governor of Virginia, he was known for a mask. If you look at Tom Tillis, a great guy, he always had a mask, and they caught it.
Well, there are pictures of Tom Tillis, actually, with one of Judge Barrett's kids not wearing a mask. But, you know, Chris Christie, he was part of your debate prep.
Yeah.
He was, I believe, at that event. He came out tonight, he was sick, very sick. He was in the hospital for about a week.
Yes, I know that.
He came out tonight and said, I was wrong not to wear a mask.
Well, I mean, he has to say that. I think it's great. He's a friend of mine. He's a good guy. And wrong or not wrong, you have to understand, as president, I can't be locked in a room someplace for the next year and just stay and do nothing. And every time I go into a crowd, I was with the parents of our fallen heroes. These people are the most incredible people, and they came up to me, and they would hug me, and they would touch me, and I'm not going to not let them do it, to be honest with you.
Now, there was an event with the Gold Star families the day after the Supreme Court event.
A Gold Star event with the most incredible people you've ever seen. And I could have chosen not to talk to them or to keep everybody away. And you know what? As, and I don't think that's probably where it was caught, but maybe it was.
Well, I was, I was going to say, you bring it up. You brought it up yourself. I mean, are you trying to suggest that? Do you believe a grieving military family gave you COVID?
No, I don't know where it came from.
Okay.
And you don't know where it came from, and the doctors don't know where it came from. But as the president, I have to be out there. I also know...
Well, there's no one that says you can't be out there, but it's just about wearing masks and having, for example, your rallies.
But I know this.
Your rallies don't require masks.
Well, no, I mean, let's see Kamala. She's got people now, the people have it, and I'm not blaming her. I'm not saying, oh, she did a terrible thing. As president, I have to be out there. I can't be in a basement. I can't be locked in a very beautiful room someplace in the White House. And I want to see the Gold Star families, and I want to see everybody. And I also say to people all the time, it's risky doing it. It is risky doing it.
But as president, you, you're right. You don't want to, you want to be a leader, but you also are a leader and a setter of an example. And if you're not wearing a mask when your administration is saying best practice right now is wear a mask, no, it's not foolproof.
But many people are catching it. Many people are getting this disease that was sent to us by China, and it shouldn't have been allowed to happen. But many people are getting this, and, I mean, nobody's being blamed. Everybody is working hard to get this thing out of our country, get it out of the world. Look at what's going on in Europe. Massive spikes. They've done a very good job, but now you take a look today at the UK, you take a look at Spain and France and Italy, there's tremendous spikes.
But our death rate is worse than, well, not Spain, but those other countries.
Well, I have, I have things right here that will tell you exactly the opposite.
Me too.
So the UK is up 2,500%, because I knew you'd be doing this. I know you very well. The UK is up 2,500%. The EU is up 722%, and the United States is down 21%.
But we have, our deaths per capita is among the highest, among industrially...
Excess mortality. Excess mortality, we're a winner on the excess mortality. And what we've done has been amazing, and we have done an amazing job. And it's rounding the corner, and we have the vaccines coming, and we have the therapies coming. And I'll tell you what, one thing, when I got it, I had a choice, do nothing or use some of the things that we're looking at, like, in this case, Regeneron. And Eli Lilly makes something that's supposed to be incredible. And I think that maybe I wouldn't be doing this discussion with you right now. We have therapies now, and cures, maybe, you can use the word cure, but we have therapies that are absolutely incredible, Savannah.
Now, I want to pick up on something you just said. You said we're rounding the corner.
I believe we're rounding the corner, yeah.
Now, 10% of the country approximately has had COVID. That means 80, 90%, 90%, let's do the math, is still vulnerable.
Right, right, that's right.
There's been some talk, including from the White House lately, that perhaps it approves of what's called herd immunity. That's where you basically just let young people and everybody get sick. You try to protect the old people and those who are sick, and hopefully it gets up to a certain level, and now we're all immune.
Yeah.
So let's just be clear about it. It also means more deaths. Do you support herd immunity as a strategy, essentially just let people get sick?
So, the cure cannot be worse than the problem itself. We did the right thing. We were expected to lose 2 million, 200,000 people and maybe more than that. We're at 210,000 people. One person is too much. It should have never happened because of China. It happened because of China. And you have to get that and understand that. But it shouldn't have happened. But we were expected to lose. If you look at the original charts from original doctors who are respected by everybody, 2 million, 200,000 people.
That 2 million figure, though, is if you literally did nothing.
We sold 2 million people.
The 2 million figure is if you did absolutely nothing, it would be 2 million.
If we...
The question is, should the deaths be better than 200,000 when relative to the rest of the world, we have a worse death rate?
Let me tell you what is happening. I left North Carolina, which I love. I left Pennsylvania. We won a big case in Michigan because that governor has a lockdown where nobody but her husband can do anything. He can go boating and do whatever he wants, but nobody else can. The fact is, we're winning all these cases because it's unconstitutional what they're doing. And I think they're doing it for political reasons. But the fact is, the cure, you can't, you can't let this continue to go on with the lockdowns.
Well, most of the states...
And I believe that on November 4th, you're going to have a lot of these governors. Look at what's happening to New York. New York is a mess. They lost almost 40,000 people. They have a lockdown like you've never seen. Now they're open. It's like a ghost town.
Let's get to him.
And Savannah, it's very important. People are leaving New York by the thousands, and you're going to have a hard time ever building it up again.
Let's get to him.
So that cure, that so-called cure that you talk about, it can't be worse than the problem. The problem is a bad problem.
We've got more questions on COVID, so let's drop it for now. We were supposed to, as mentioned, be watching you on a debate stage right now. We're not doing that, so let's clear up a few things from the last one. You were asked point blank to denounce white supremacy. In the moment, you didn't. You asked some follow-up questions, who specifically? A couple of days later, on a different show, you denounced white supremacy.
No, you always do this.
My question to you is...
You've done this today, and everybody...
Why does it seem like...
I denounced white supremacy, okay?
You did two days later.
I denounced white supremacy for years, but you always do it. You always start off with a question. You didn't ask Joe Biden whether or not he denounces Antifa. I watched him on the same basic show with Lester Holt, and he was asking questions like Biden was a child.
Well, so, this is a little bit of a jive.
Are you ready? Wait, are you listening? I denounced white supremacy.
Okay.
What's your next question?
Do you feel, it feels sometimes you're hesitant to do so, like you wait a beat.
Hesitant. Here we go again. Every time, in fact, my people came, I'm sure they'll ask you the white supremacy question. I denounced white supremacy.
Okay.
And frankly, you want to know something? I denounced Antifa, and I denounced these people on the left that are burning down our cities that are run by Democrats who don't know what they're doing.
All right, while we're denouncing, let me ask you about QAnon. It is this theory that Democrats are a satanic pedophile ring and that you are the savior of that. Now, can you just once and for all state that that is completely not true and disavow QAnon in its entirety?
I know nothing about QAnon.
I just told you.
I know very little. You told me, but what you tell me doesn't necessarily make it fact. I hate to say that. I know nothing about it. I do know they are very much against pedophilia. They fight it very hard, but I know nothing about it.
They believe it is a satanic call run by the deep state.
If you'd like me to study the subject, I'll tell you what I do know about. I know about Antifa, and I know about the radical left, and I know how violent they are and how vicious they are, and I know how they're burning down cities run by Democrats, not run by Republicans.
Republican Senator Ben Sasse said, quote, "QAnon is nuts," and real leaders call conspiracy theories conspiracy theories.
He may be right.
Why not just say it's crazy and not true?
Can I be honest? He may be right. I just don't know about QAnon.
You do know.
I don't know. No, I don't know. I don't know.
Let me ask you another thing.
You tell me all about it. Let's waste a whole show. You start off with white supremacy, I denounce it. You start off with something else, let's go. Keep asking me these questions.
I do have one more in this vein.
Let me just tell you, what I do hear about it is they are very strongly against pedophilia, and I agree with that. I mean, I do agree with that, and I agree with it personally.
But there's not a satanic pedophile called a run by...
I have no idea. I know nothing about that.
You don't know that?
No, I don't know that.
You, just this week...
And neither do you know that.
Okay, just this week, you retweeted...
Why aren't you asking me about Antifa? Why aren't you asking me about the radical left?
Because you're, because you're...
Why aren't you asking Joe Biden questions about, why doesn't he condemn Antifa? Why does he say it doesn't exist?
Because you're here before me.
Antifa, no, geez, so cute. Antifa exists. They're vicious, they're violent, they kill people, and they're burning down our cities. And they happen to be radical left.
Just this week, you retweeted to your 87 million followers a conspiracy theory that Joe Biden orchestrated to have SEAL Team Six, the Navy SEAL Team Six, killed to cover up the fake death of Bin Laden. Now, why would you send a lie like that to your followers?
I know nothing about it.
You retweeted it.
That was a retweet. That was an opinion of somebody, and that was a retweet. I'll put it out there. People can decipher themselves.
I don't get that. You're the president. You're not like someone's crazy uncle who can just retweet whatever.
No, 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 no. That was a retweet, and I do a lot of retweets. And frankly, because the media is so fake and so corrupt, if I didn't have social media, I don't call it Twitter, I call it social media, I wouldn't be able to get the word out.
Well, the word is false.
And you know what the word is? The word is very simple. We're building our country stronger and better than it's ever been before.
Let's...
And that's what's happening, and everybody knows it.
Okay, we got a bunch of questions for you.
You know what else the word is? We're winning in a lot of states. We're winning in a lot of states. You can see that.
Okay, I'm glad you brought up the election, because I do want to ask you about that. That's another kind of leftover item. A lot of people have asked you, will you accept a peaceful transfer of power? You have said repeatedly, the only way we lose this election is if it is rigged. Now, that is simply not true. The fact is, either candidate can lose fair and square without ballot fraud.
Sure, we can, and you know what?
So will you accept the results of the election?
Win or lose, that's the way I want it to be. But when I see thousands of ballots, right, unsolicited ballots being given out by the millions, and thousands of them are dumped in dumpsters, and when you see ballots with the name Trump, military ballots from our great military, and they're dumped in garbage cans...
That is a handful. We could go all night, which we won't, but we could go all night...
No, no, it's happening every day.
One by one, a single case, a single there. You're talking about 150 million votes. Your own FBI director says there is no evidence of widespread fraud.
Oh, really? Well, then he's not doing a very good job. All you have to do is pick up the papers every day. 50,000 in Ohio, the great state of Ohio, 50,000 in another location, I think, North Carolina, 500,000 applications in Virginia. No, no, there's a tremendous problem. But let me just tell you, they talk about the peaceful transfer, right? They spied on my campaign, and they got caught, and they spied heavily on my campaign, and they tried to take down a duly elected city president, and then they talk about, will you accept a peaceful transfer? And the answer is yes, I will. But I want it to be an honest election, and so does everybody else. When I see thousands of ballots dumped in a garbage can, and they happen to have my name on it, I'm not happy about that.
Okay, but just, those are case, there is no, there is in fact no evidence of widespread fraud, and you were sowing doubt about our democracy, our democracy.
How can you say that? You do read newspapers.
I do.
You do watch the news.
Yes, I do.
I know you read the news, but you watch it.
I do.
Because every day, they're talking about ballots that are corrupt, that are fraudulent...
And millions that are, are being processed right now.
Sure, but you can win a race. Take a look at me. You can win a race by 1%.
But why are you laying the groundwork for that right now?
I'm not. I don't want that to happen.
It's like if I go play tennis with my husband, and I say my ankle's hurting right now.
Do you know what? I don't want that to happen, Savannah. I want it to be clean. I really feel we're going to win, but I want this to be clean.
Let's get to...
But it's sort of ironic that you and them talk about the peaceful transfer when I spent three and a half years fighting off these maniacs, and now it turns out everything's there, that they were the ones that dealt with Russia. And it's too bad. But peaceful transfer, I absolutely want that, but ideally, I don't want a transfer because I want to win.
Okay, and I think that your words will probably reassure some folks. Let's get to our first voter. We've got Jacqueline Lugo. Now, she is, I told you, this, this audience is truly split between y'all. You are leaning Biden. She voted for Clinton in 2016. She's registered as an independent. Jacqueline, what's your question for the president? And hold the mic up close and take off your mic, because it's hard to hear out here.
Good evening.
How are you?
Welcome to Miami.
Thank you very much. Beautiful.
Mr. President, if you knew COVID-19, as you told Bob Woodward in February...
As what?
As you told Bob Woodward in February was airborne and deadlier than the flu, why did you only put in place a travel ban from China and not put in place other measures mitigating the spread of COVID-19, potentially saving tens of thousands of American lives?
Well, I did put it in very early, as you know. Joe Biden was two months behind me, and he called me xenophobic and racist and everything else because I put it in, and it turned out that I was 100% right. I also put it on Europe very early, because I saw there was a lot of infection in Europe. And it's sort of an amazing question, and I appreciate the question and respect the question, but the news doesn't get out the right answer, because I put on a travel ban far earlier than Dr. Fauci thought it was necessary, who I like, far earlier than the scientists. I was actually the only one that wanted to put it on, and I did it, actually against the advice of a lot of people, including Nancy Pelosi, who had no clue what she was doing, and Biden. When I put on the travel ban, you know, I put it on in January, the end of January. When I put on the travel ban, Joe Biden and others said, this is ridiculous. You don't do that. Well, Dr. Fauci said I saved thousands and thousands of lives.
Did you...
I was early. I was extremely early when I put on the travel ban.
Can I ask you, did your national security advisor on January 28th in the Oval Office warn you that this would be the greatest national security risk of your administration?
I read it, but no, he didn't.
He didn't say it, or you don't remember?
I read it someplace, maybe Woodward said it or something, but no, he did not say that. But I knew it was a big threat. At the same time, I don't want to panic this country. I don't want to go out and say, everybody's going to die, everybody's going to...
Isn't there a middle ground? You don't have to mislead, but you can...
No, 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 there's not a middle ground. You have to be safe, you have to be vigilant, and you have to be smart.
You're going to like this next couple of voters.
Good.
It's a mom and a daughter.
Good.
Mom Barbara voted for you in 2016. She's leaning to vote for you again. Now, her daughter was too young to vote last time. She's going to vote for her first time in a presidential campaign, and she is leaning Biden. So imagine the dinner table at their house, okay? So Barbara, why don't you go first and ask your question?
Bienvenido a Miami.
Thank you.
Mr. Trump, as a frontline ER doctor working through the coronavirus pandemic...
Right.
...I know firsthand, and I've seen that many hospitals throughout the United States are suffering financial hardships. These economic effects are trickling down to the frontline workers. We are being, across the country, frontline workers are being fired, they're being furloughed, our salaries are being cut. And this is also happening in other economic sectors as well, including the travel industry and hospitality.
Right.
My question to you is, how are you going to get the United States back on track, both in terms of the economy and the pandemic?
So it's happening. We just set a record, 11.4 million jobs. We are going to have a phenomenal third quarter, which will be announced on November 1st, just prior to the big November 3rd day, where I think you're going to see a red wave. But we're going to have a tremendous announcement, I believe. I mean, we're going to find out, but GDP is going through the roof. Jobs, real estate, houses, so many things are happening. So people were saying we were going to have a 42% unemployment. Look, this was a thing that came into our country, and it happened 100, more than 100 years ago, and it happened now. They were talking about a 42% unemployment rate.
Who was talking about that? I heard 20%. I heard 20%.
It just came out at 7.8% unemployment, and people can't even believe it. Our economy is going to be, next year, if we don't have somebody that raises taxes and quadruples taxes, which they want to do and kills everything, our economy is going to be phenomenal next year. We're going to have a phenomenal. And I'll tell you, Savannah, we had the greatest economy in the history of our country last year, including the state of Florida, where we are now, and Pennsylvania, and North Carolina, and Ohio, every place. We had the greatest economy we ever had. We had to close it down, we saved 2 million lives, we're opening it up, we have a V shape, and it's coming back, it's coming back very fast. One other thing, we really helped the hospitals. We've sent billions and billions of dollars to the hospitals. In addition, hundreds of millions of masks and gowns. And we went into the ventilator business because this country was not equipped with ventilators. And I'm not blaming anybody for it. But we're now making thousands of ventilators a month, and we have all we can use, we're sending them all over the world because the world needs them. So they've worked very hard and really very, very effectively. Thank you, great question.
Let's talk to Isabella, put the mic close to your mouth. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. President, my parents are, as you heard, both frontline healthcare workers. And I've seen the physical and the mental tolls that this pandemic has taken on them firsthand, as well as the exacerbation of coronavirus due to Americans who are not wearing masks or participating in social distancing. After contracting COVID-19 yourself, has your opinion changed on the importance of mask-wearing?
No, because I was okay with the masks. I was good with it. But I've heard many different stories on masks. I mean, I had, you know, being president, you have people, they bring meals, they bring this. And I had an instance recently where a very wonderful person is bringing me a meal, and he's playing with his mask, and he's touching his mask all over the place, and then he's bringing a plate in, and I'm saying, well, I don't know if that's so good. I mean, the good news, I didn't eat it, okay? I decided not to eat it. This was a month ago. But I look, you have, on the masks, you know, you have two stories. You have a story where they want, a story where they don't want. I am all for it.
I don't get that, because it's just, all of your public health officials, your administration, they're in unison about this. They're all in unison about it. The University of Washington, which is a stud, is a, they have a model that your coronavirus task force relies on, says that if everyone wore a mask, you could cut expected deaths in half, 60,000 lives.
And then you have other people that disagree?
Well, what does that mean?
Scott Atkins, if you look at Scott, Dr. Scott, he's from, great guy, Stanford, he will tell you that he disagrees with you.
He's not an infectious disease expert.
Oh, I don't know. Look, he's an expert, he's one of the great experts of the world.
But I don't get it, because you have so much power and influence as president. You could go to your, you could require it at your rallies, and you could say, everyone put on a mask right now, and the University of Washington says you could save lives.
Savannah, University of Washington, and you have other places say different things. You have a lot of, hey, Dr. Fauci said don't wear a mask, right?
At first, but then everybody agreed.
No, I don't know, then he changed his mind. But then you have a report coming out two days ago that 85% of the people wearing masks catch it.
I looked at that report, it's not about mask-wearing. It was neutral on the question of masks.
Savannah, Savannah, we're on the same side. I say, wear the mask, I'm fine with it. I have no problem. We're on the same side.
Let's take a break. We're going to get more questions right after this. Live in Miami with President Trump for a town hall. Thank you again, Mr. President. We have another voter now, Kristi Alonzo, come on out, Kristi. She is leaning slightly towards you, she says. She voted for you in 2016. Kristi, you ready? Take the mask off, hold the mic close, and let's hear your question.
Thank you for your service, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
We're a hardworking, middle-class family of four. My husband and I are both self-employed, and we have to get our own individual healthcare. As you know, healthcare costs have gone up considerably over the decades. And you had originally said you were going to repeal and replace Obamacare. What is your plan now in 2020 to make healthcare costs affordable for Americans like myself?
So we got rid of the individual mandate on Obamacare, which was the worst part of Obamacare, and now you could actually say it's not Obamacare, because that's how big it was. Well, you had to pay a fortune for the privilege of not having to pay for bad health insurance. So we got rid of that. That was a big, big thing. And by doing that, and we will always have, by the way, we're always protecting people with pre-existing conditions, and I can't say that more strongly. But we've been able to bring healthcare costs way down. Now, I took over Obamacare, got rid of the individual mandate, made it good, managed it much better. Remember, they had the $5 billion website disaster and all of the problems they had. The problem with Obamacare, it's not good. We'd like to terminate it, and we want a much less expensive healthcare, that's a much better healthcare, and that's where we're aiming. And if we can do that, and we have a very good chance of doing it. But we've also brought down the price of Obamacare. Problem with Obamacare, it basically is never going to be great. And I want to give great healthcare.
Mr. President, I got to follow up on the pre-existing conditions. This is such a big issue for voters.
It is a big issue for me, too.
In point of fact, your administration is about to go to the Supreme Court to argue to throw out the rest of Obamacare, which includes the protections for pre-existing conditions. So your administration is in court right now, trying to get rid of that protection.
In order to replace it with a much better healthcare at a much lower price, and always, under all circumstances, we are going to protect the Republicans. And I mean, maybe I changed the party a lot over the last three years, but we will protect people with pre-existing conditions. And Savannah, what I want to do, get rid of the terrible Obamacare. I've already done it to a large extent, because as you know, the individual mandate is gone. That was the worst part.
You repealed, but you haven't replaced. Now, you've been in office almost four years.
What we have done.
You had both Houses of Congress, Senate and House, in Republican hands, and there is not a replacement yet.
That's right. I'm sorry, but if you look, we had both Houses, and what did we do? We got rid of the individual mandate. That went through the legislature.
The promise was repeal and replace.
Look, look, we should be on the same side. I want it very simple, I'm going to put it very simple. We would like to terminate it, and we would like to replace it with something that's much less expensive and much better. We will always protect people with pre-existing conditions.
But if you successfully court in November those pre-existing conditions, that promise will be gone.
If we don't succeed, we are running the remnants of whatever is left, because we took it apart. We are running the remnants of whatever is left much better than the previous administration, which ran it very badly. But we'd like to have new healthcare, much better and much less expensive.
Let me get to question number five, and you'll like this. He's stuck in traffic. His name is Joe White. He is registered as a Democrat. He says he's leaning toward Biden, and Biden had voted for Hillary Clinton in 2016. And his question was, "A second stimulus payment has been broadly agreed upon by the Republicans and Democrats, and yet now we're in October and it's still not passed. Why not use your office to make the second stimulus payment a separate targeted emergency relief package to help Americans weather the pandemic?"
Well, we've actually passed three packages, and we're on our fourth. And I agree with him 100%. He should vote for me. The problem you have is Nancy Pelosi. She couldn't care less about the worker, she couldn't care less about our people, and we should have a stimulus. And I want a stimulus, the Republicans will approve a stimulus. The problem is, she doesn't want to do it because she thinks it's bad for her election. The fact is, she's wrong. Because people know, she's in our way, she's not approving it, she doesn't appreciate our people, and she doesn't appreciate at all our workers. Nancy Pelosi, we are ready to sign and pass stimulus, but she's got to approve it.
People do not love the back and forth of Washington, but this has been a rollercoaster. Back in early October, you one day tweeted, "No more negotiations until after Election Day, I'm walking away." Then I think the next couple of days, you said, "Maybe we can do something targeted." Then you said, "I want a big, big bill." But then Senate Republicans said, "No, we're not for that." So you're the big dealmaker. How come this is so, you yourself have changed positions?
Did you ever hear of word called negotiation? We're negotiating, okay?
The people, people's lives are hanging in the balance.
And you know who I'm negotiating against? Nancy Pelosi, because she doesn't want to give the money. We should have stimulus. This was not our people's fault, this was China's fault. And she's penalizing our people. I'm ready to sign a big, beautiful stimulus. You saw the other day, I say, "Go big or go home," right?
That's what I was talking about.
I wanted to be big, I wanted to be bold, I want the money go directly to the people.
Are Senate Republicans with you, they're going to go big? A big old number?
They'll go, yeah, they'll go. They're going to be very happy.
Okay, because so far, they have not said they would.
I know, because I haven't asked them to, because I can't get through Nancy Pelosi. If Nancy Pelosi and I, through my representatives or directly, I don't care, if we agree to something, the Republicans will agree to it.
Okay. Our next question comes from, oh, this is interesting. She voted for Clinton in 2016, but recently changed her registration from Democrat to independent. She says she's truly undecided. Her name's Becky Lightman. Hello, Becky, what's your question?
How are you?
Hi, I'm great. How are you?
Nice to see you, thank you.
Good to see you. So corporate tax rates are a hot-button issue, and you have cut corporate tax rates, and your opponent, Joe Biden, is planning to raise them. A lot of Americans think that corporations don't pay their share of taxes and want to see those tax rates increase. What do you say to those Americans to maybe tell them why you want the corporate tax rate lower and why that helps them?
It's a great question. We've created more jobs than this country has ever created. We're up to 160 million jobs, we were never even close to that number. We were just hitting 160 million jobs. Companies are pouring into our nation because of the tax rate. And if Biden comes in and raises taxes on everybody, including middle-income taxes, which he wants to do, you will blow this thing, and you'll end up with a depression the likes of which you've never had. That's what's going to happen. We have something that's really good. The reason we're coming back so strong is because we built a very strong foundation. Companies are moving in, car companies are moving into Michigan, into Ohio, into South Carolina and North Carolina just today. So what's happening is, they're coming in because we reduced the taxes. Our taxes, our corporate taxes, were the highest in the world, and now they're among the lower taxes. They're not the lowest, but they're among the lowest. And what that means is jobs. But also, we're doing a very big, and we've done, a very big middle-income tax package. So if we get in, we're going to do the middle-income tax package. But it's a great question. And if he comes along and raises rates, all those companies that are coming in, they will leave the U.S. so fast your head will spin. We can't let that happen.
On the subject of taxes, as you know, The New York Times has obtained, it says, "Years of your tax returns," among other things, it says that you have debts of approximately $421 million that you have personally guaranteed and that will come due in the next four years. The question is, on behalf of voters, who do you owe $421 million to?
Okay, first of all, let me answer. What they did is illegal, number one. Also, the numbers are all wrong, with the numbers they released. And just so you understand, when you have a lot of real estate, I have real estate, you know a lot of it, okay? Right down the road, Doral, big stuff, great stuff. I'm very under, when I decided to run, I'm very under-levered, fortunately, but I'm very under-levered. I have a very, very small percentage of debt compared, in fact, some of it I did as favors to institutions that wanted to loan me money. $400 million compared to the assets that I have, all of these great properties all over the world, and frankly, the Bank of America building in San Francisco, I don't love what's happening to San Francisco.
Do I hear you right? It sounds like you're saying $400 million isn't that much?
One of the biggest office buildings.
But are you confirming that, yes, you do owe some $400 million?
What I'm saying is that it's a tiny percentage of my net worth.
That sounds like, yes.
And you'll see that soon, because we're doing things, you know, we've given, I think it's 108 or 112 pages of financial detail to elections, and you know, we have to file as the president, as any politician, you have to file. Nobody ever looks at that. When they do, they see how incredible the company is, but more importantly, they see where this debt is. No, I don't owe Russia money, I don't owe, I owe a very, very small, it's called mortgages. People have a house, they put a mortgage.
Any foreign bank, any foreign entity?
Not that I know of, but I will probably, because it's so easy to solve, and if you'd like to do, I will let you know who I owe whatever small amount of money. I want to say two things. Number one, it's a very small amount of money. Number two, it's very straight, it's very, very straight. But it's a tiny percentage of the worth. Did you ever hear the expression, "under-levered"? I am extremely under-levered.
Here's the thing, you could clear this up tonight by just releasing your tax returns yourself. I mean, that's what I understand, I think people are just wondering, you're the only...
As you know, I'm under-audited. It turned out that I am under-audited.
Yes, but the IRS says, you are.
Excuse me, no, no, but you accused...
The IRS says that doesn't stop you from releasing.
But you accused me of not being under-audited previously, and so did other people at NBC, and I am under-audited. So that was solved, that's good. I am under-audited. No person in their right mind would release prior to working out the deal with the IRS. And I'll go a step further. I'm treated very badly by the IRS. They treat me very, very badly. You have people in there from previous administrations, they treat me very badly. But we're under-audited. It's very routine in many ways, but we're under-audited. They like to change the game, change the rules, do everything. You saw what they did with the Tea Party people, you saw what they did with the religious group.
But to be clear, there is no law or rule that prohibits you from releasing your tax returns?
No, except common sense and intelligence, and having lawyers that say, because I would love to release them, and as soon as we come to a conclusion, I will release them, and very gladly. But if you go to elections, and if you take a look, you'll see 112, I think it's 112, it talks about the income, which is rather massive, it talks about all of the properties, they have them listed. You can never learn more, but you know what happened? People went there, all the reporters went there, it was like a feeding frenzy, this was originally when I filed it. And I filed it every year, I updated every year. My son is here, they run the company, I don't run the company.
It also says that you paid $750 in taxes in the year you were elected. Is that true?
Yeah, because that's a statutory number, it's a statutory.
But is that true?
I think it's a filing number. You pay $750, it's a filing, a filing fee.
But is that on page? Most people here probably paid more.
No, I don't know. I can tell you this. If they have my tax returns, as you know, they have to go to jail, it's illegal. But their numbers were wrong. But let me tell you what else. I don't owe money to any of these sinister people. This has been going on for years now, Russia, 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 it turned out to be a hoax. And it turned out to be that Hillary Clinton and the Democrats were dealing with Russia, not me. It's a whole hoax. So I would not mind at all saying who it is, but it's a very small, when you look at vast properties like I have, and they're big and they're beautiful and they're well-located, when you look at that, the amount of money, $400 million is a peanut, it's extremely under-levered. And it's levered with normal banks, not a big deal.
All right, let's take a break. We'll get more. Another voter, Adam Schuhler. He voted for Clinton in 2016, he's registered as a Democrat and says he's supporting Biden. Adam, take it away.
Thank you, Savannah. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Adam.
Four years ago, Senate leadership said it was inappropriate to push through a nominee in an election year. Yet they fast-tracked your nominee for the Supreme Court just today. The question I have for you is, how do you, what do you say to the voter that thinks it's hypocritical to act in that manner, and that they can't trust Republicans' word?
So when I was elected, and when a president is elected, they're elected for a period of four years. And Justice Ginsburg said it best, I think talking about President Obama having to do with somebody else, that the president is put there for four years, not for three years. So during this fourth year, it happened to come up, unfortunately, because I had great respect for Justice Ginsburg, but a vacancy happened to come up, and we picked somebody that's outstanding. She has been an absolute star, and I'm extremely proud of it. But again, plenty of time, I mean, there's plenty of time, we're going to do it before the election, but we also have much time after the election, but there's no reason to wait. Because it's almost unanimous, it seems to me, certainly within the Republican Party, and frankly, most of the Democrats within closed rooms, I guarantee you that. This is an outstanding person. And I'm using my fourth term. And you know, if you look at it, and if you put the shoe on the other foot, if they had this, they would do it 100%. So there's been 29 times when this has happened, all 29 times, a president has done exactly what I've done.
Can I just, to the voter's point, I'll just say that in 2016, you were on another show, actually, another morning show, and you were asked whether President Obama should nominate a Supreme Court Justice Merrick Garland. And you said, "I think the Senate should wait until the next president and let the president pick." Now, that was eight months before the election. This is three weeks before the election.
So I have a lot of respect, by the way.
So you have changed your position on this.
I have a lot of respect for Judge Garland, I want to tell you that. But I'll tell you, the whole ballgame changed when I saw the way they treated Justice Kavanaugh. I have never seen any human being, and I'm not just talking about Supreme Court, I have never seen a human being treated so badly with false accusations and everything else. I have never seen anything like it. And you know what? The truth is, Savannah, like it or not, the ballgame changed a lot. There has never been anybody treated so badly as now Justice Kavanaugh.
You've mentioned that you would like to see Amy Coney Barrett confirmed to the Supreme Court in case any challenges come up in connection with the election. Do you expect her to rule for you?
I think she'll have to make that decision. I don't think she has any conflict at all. You know, a Supreme Court judge does not have, I mean, they can make their own decision. And they actually have additional power to make that decision. It would be totally up to her. I would think that she would be able to rule either for me or against me, I don't see any conflict whatsoever. We have an election coming up, I think it's the most important election in the history of our country, if for any chance, and it probably won't, and I hope it doesn't ever get to the Supreme Court, but if it did, I would think that she would rule one way or the other. I would think so.
But for you, you think she would rule for you?
I have no idea.
I mean, of course she'll rule one way or the other, but...
Because, believe it or not, I'd never asked her about it, I never talked about it, I didn't talk about any of the obvious things that you could talk about, and I think a lot of people in my position might. But in speaking to a lot of very brilliant people and people that do this for a living, they say it's better not to talk. So I talked to her about life, I talked to her about the fact, would you like to do this? Are you willing to do this? Because it's a tremendous burden. The answer was yes. She's unbelievably well-qualified, but I never spoke to her about these various questions.
Let's get our next voter. She's leaning to you, Mr. President. She voted for you in 2016, she is a registered Republican. Her name is Mariah Green. Mariah, what's your question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President. I'm honored to be with you here tonight, sir, so thank you. I'm a pro-life millennial, and my question for you today is, if Roe v. Wade is ultimately overturned in the future, what protections would be put in place or kept for where the mother's life is in jeopardy in relation to high-risk pregnancies?
Well, again, I'm not ruling on this, and Roe v. Wade is something that a lot of people would say, obviously, you're going to speak to somebody. I also, two other great justices, Justice Gorsuch and Justice Kavanaugh, I never spoke to them about Roe v. Wade, I never spoke to them about election laws, I never spoke to them about anything. And I've done the right thing from a moral standpoint, I don't even know from a legal standpoint, but it was the right thing. I think, depending on what happens with Roe v. Wade, I think that perhaps it could get sent down to the states, and the states would decide. I also think perhaps nothing will happen. I have not talked to her about it, I think it would be inappropriate to talk to her about it, and some people would say you can talk to her about it, I just think it would be inappropriate.
But what is your preference? Because it agreed, that's not something you should talk to the judge about. But would you like to see Roe versus Wade overturned?
I would like to see a brilliant jurist, a brilliant person who has done this in great depth and has actually skirted this issue for a long time, make a decision. And that's why I chose her. I think that she's going to make a great decision. I did not tell her what decision to make, and I think it would be inappropriate to say right now, because I don't want to do anything to influence her. I want her to get approved, and then I want her to go by the law, and I know she's going to make a great decision for our country, along with the other 50 people I put in.
But you're running as a pro-life Republican, most pro-life Republicans would like to see Roe v. Wade overturned and abortion banned.
Many of them would, perhaps most of them would. I am telling you, I don't want to do anything to influence anything right now. I don't want to go out tomorrow and say, oh, he's trying to, give her a signal. Because I didn't speak to her about it, I've done the right thing in so doing. How she's going to rule, you're going to find out perhaps, or you might not find out. I mean, it may never get there. It may never get there. We'll see what happens.
All right, we have another question. This is Cindy Velez. She is undecided. She says she's leaning to Biden, and she did vote for Clinton in 2016. She's registered as a Democrat. Hi, Cindy, what's your question?
Good evening, Savannah. Good evening, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
As the mother of a young male of color, I have raised him to respect authority, not only because it's the right thing to do, but also out of fear that he may face profiling or be considered a criminal.